Okay, good afternoon. My name is Bill Henry. I'm the councilman for the 4th district, Chair of the City Council's Equity and Structure Committee. We are joined here online today by Councilman Christopher Burnett of the 8th District, who is the Vice Chair of the Committee, and Councilwoman Danielle McCray, excuse me, of the 2nd District, member of the Committee. We are also joined by the Council President, Council President Scott, and I believe Kaylin Young and Dominic McIlroy of his office, and Sam Johnson of the Office of Legislative, I'm sorry, of Council Services, staff to the Committee, and we're, ah, and there's Mr. Stegman. We're also joined by Matt Stegman of the Mayor's Office representing the Administration. We have a number of bills and charter amendments to consider this afternoon. We are going to be starting with City Council Bill 19-0442, Legislation, Equity Assessment, and Fiscal Note Requirement. I'm gonna turn the floor over to Council President Scott as the sponsor of the bill, and then we will go to Agency Reports. Mr. Council President.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon, everyone. I'll be very brief and then I'll step away to allow the Committee to do their work. Just to simply say that good policy starts with a deep understanding of the issue at hand. Before it votes on any bill, the City Council should know what the bill does, how much it will cost taxpayers, and what the impacts it will have on all Baltimoreans. Knowing that we are now moving into a city government that we'd be operating through a lens of equity, that's even more important now than before. We know that in the Maryland General Assembly, every piece of legislation is analyzed for its policy and fiscal impact. That means before our state legislative vote on the bill, they have a clear understanding of what the bill does and how much it will cost Marylanders. We want to make sure the City Council and Baltimoreans have the same benefit. This ordinance will support a more responsible, fiscally sound, and equitable legislative body. By mandating this analysis, the City Council will be better equipped to introduce and consider thoughtful legislation to support all Baltimore city residents. That is the sole purpose of this bill, and I look forward to working with the Committee and the agencies to be able to get this put into place so that we can operate in a better way moving forward. Thank you, Mrs. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also note that we've been joined by Councilman Eric Costello of the 11th District. And I think that's all in terms of new additions. So now what we'll do is we'll go to Agency Reports for this bill. Let's start with the Law Department. Mr. Petro?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, and I'm the member of the Committee, and I'm President Scott. The Law Department has reviewed the bill for form of legal sufficiency. We see no legal impediments to requiring these types of assessments and fiscal notes with respect to before passage of the bill.
Thank you. Also, next we have the Finance Department. Finance Department opposes the bill but has an amendment, so Mr. Senemi?
Hi, good afternoon. This is Bob Senemi from the Department of Finance, Budget Director. So a couple of comments on this bill. So first off, the bill would require a fiscal note and an equity assessment note to be done by the Office of Council Services. So first, we needed to go and see what the cost of that additional work would be. And we estimate that if Council Services were to pick up this work, that they would need an additional three resources. We used like a budget analyst, like an entry-level budget analyst as the benchmark. Three of those fully loaded with both salary, including salary and benefits and pension, is over $300,000. So we think the cost would be three, over $300,000. We don't think it would be realistic that the existing staff would do the work necessarily because they have other duties that they're already performing for the Council. The second point on this is that this work is already being done. The Finance Department produces a response on any bill that has some kind of financial impact. Whether it's being read and looked at and listened to, that's not up to me. And sometimes it's ignored, frankly, to be very blunt. But you know, not all the time does that that analysis get looked at. And but it's being done. If you go back to the bills that have a financial impact, we do an analysis. We say what the incremental cost will be. We talk about other considerations, so we mention policy considerations. So it's there, and you know, we've worked over the last year and a half or so to really strengthen that work. We have one dedicated person on our team now, who's Mara James, that leads all the legislative work, and we dole out the bill responses. She doesn't write everything. She doles out some of the responses to an analyst on our team that has the expertise that can write the response. So some of them I write if they're at a high level, you know, kind of big financial issue. If it's a smaller issue or something that's agency-specific, our analyst help with that, with those responses. I think practically too, I just want to remind folks that like this expertise doesn't just drop in just because you have an office and you have positions in the budget. It doesn't mean that that expertise is going to start on day one. The input that we give into the bill responses is largely coming from our work during the year of building the budget, understanding agency budgets, understanding city financial issues. And so what we've seen is that when we've brought in people to try to do work on fiscal notes, they defer to coming to us anyway to try to get the information to help put the analysis together. I also think that from my experience, our, we've been told sometimes that our bill responses are not independent. And I would just offer that because we work for the mayor, and I would acknowledge that sometimes that creates some challenges for us being perfectly transparent and honest on a bill response. But having an office that serves under the Council side creates the same problem and the same conflict just in the other direction. So sometimes I've heard that, you know, this would be better from an independent standpoint, but I don't think in practice that that would help that much. I really like the intent of this bill because I think what, what I think is trying to be built here is some kind of independent analysis and some consistency on bill responses. I think of somebody like, like the Council President mentioned, DLS at the state level. At the federal level, CBO, the Congressional Budget Office, kind of plays that role and is seen as kind of the more independent entity and better fiscal analysis. But at the local level, frankly, we're the only ones, and it's there, and it is in the bill responses. And so we think this bill, we like the intent, we like what's trying to be built here, but we do think it's duplicative. And so if there is ways that we can kind of connect and figure out other ways we can strengthen our responses, or if we can add either visuals or additional data that would make them more powerful, we're all ears on that. Like I said, we've taken a lot of time to try to standardize our approach so that people can see the same thing every time they get one of their bill responses. And this is an example. Everyone starts with background. It says, here's the fiscal impact, here are the other considerations, and then it closes with a, with a conclusion. So we like this bill, really. The only reason we were opposed is because we think it's duplicative of work that's already going on today. And so happy to pause there and take any questions from the, from the Committee.
Mr. Chair?
Just a moment, Councilman. Just before I take your question, I just want to ask if either Councilman Burnett or Councilwoman McCray already had questions for either law or finance? Because I did not pause to ask if there were any questions after Mr. Petro's report.
I'm good, Mr. Chair. You can, you can get me on this round.
Okay, Councilwoman?
Not at this time, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know, I think these questions are for the Department of Law, for the Law Department, pardon me. First item is that the ordinance takes effect on July 1st, 2020. Obviously, that would require to be amended. That's just a comment. What I'm, what I'm not seeing in the bill is an explanation of what happens if Office of Council Services does not produce the equity assessment and/or the fiscal note. I see that if it's not submitted at least 48 hours before the scheduled committee hearing on the bill, they have to explain to the, I believe, the President in writing of the delay, the reason for the delay, and a revised delivery date. What I'm concerned with is this is giving the Office of Council Services the ability to, or the piece that I'm concerned with, is this gives the Office of Council Services the ability to hold up a bill based on staffing or workload or other issues. Can, Elena, can you address that?
Sure. I get the sense, and I'm trying to pull the bill up, but my computer is being very weird, so I'm willing to do that. But the, there does not seem to be a requirement in the bill that states that there's some penalty for failing to do this. In fact, at the very end of the bill, it says that this, that the failure to provide the reports is no way reflects on the legality or something, or validity of the legislation that it's, was supposed to be appended to. So I don't think it's meant to be punitive in that way. It's, I think it's pretty soft handling with regard to penalties or forcing, you know, forcing issue by using some sort of heavy hand. I think that it's more, you know, a requirement that they hope people will follow.
So what happens if?
I don't see anything that, any enforcement mechanism in the bill.
So what happens if OCS doesn't produce either of the two required reports? The Committee cannot vote on it?
Well, supposedly, that's what it says at the beginning, that it, you know, that the Committee won't vote on anything that doesn't contain those two documents, those two reports. But that doesn't jive too well with the end, which says that, you know, it doesn't affect the validity of the legislation. So I'm not sure what, you can say it doesn't affect the validity if you're not going to allow it to move forward without the, the.
So which of those two statements supersedes the other to resolve this question?
I'm not, I think it's ambiguous to the point where you would need to, 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 you know, more clarity.
Councilman, can, can we pause for a second and ask if either of the staff from the Council President's Office are already aware of this concern? And if they have a response, or is it something that we should continue to explore in that regards?
Mr. Chair? So thanks for the question, Councilman Costello. I think it's a good question. It's something we could, you know, clean up, make it a little tighter. That said, you know, it hadn't been pointed out to us before. Additionally, while I have the floor, Mr. Chair, if I may indulge, didn't, we were just made aware of the Finance Department's report and their opposition as well. So as the Committee continues to consider this bill, Mr. Chair, while I have the floor, just want to ask if you do not move the bill. We do want to work with Finance to resolve that. And Councilman Costello's question, make sure that we tighten up the language to make it more clearer for future Committees as well. Thank you.
Okay, just got to, oh.
I'm, I'm good. Thank you. That, that, I appreciate that, Kaylin. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank, thank you, Councilman. Kaylin, I don't know if this is something that you feel like speaking to at this point, or if you want to wait until you guys have had a chance to talk it through a little bit more. But do you have a feel for how you want to resolve this issue? In the sense of, is there the expectation that giving Council Services effectively some measure of a legislative break on when bills can be voted on is a good thing or a bad thing? Or is this just something that you guys haven't talked about from this perspective yet?
The goal is that, you know, each piece of legislation, we want to make sure has these various pieces of information for members to consider. And we know historically that many bills have had, have been passed and have had impact in these spheres, but have not necessarily, that information may or may not have been brought to the Council previously. I don't think that we want to necessarily provide Council Services as a staffing, as a staff agency, the ability to veto or supersede the authority of the Council and particularly the Chair of a Committee. So we would want to make sure that that's the case. But we do want to send the signal that this information and these reports are relevant and pertinent and necessary for every piece of legislation.
Understood. Thank you. I had, I had, Bob had two things I wanted to respond to in the Finance Report. One, only because I've been recently looking to replace an 18-year-old car, I was struck by the term of describing three new budget analysts as fully loaded. That, that made for a very interesting mental picture of what particular accessories we would be looking for in budget analysts. And I'd be happy to talk with you more about that offline. But, but I did also think about what, what it would mean if we were to give that additional analytic capability to the Office of Council Services. And what it, what it called to mind were some of the concerns that the Finance Department had about the Charter Amendment in which the Council would be given the power to add money to the budget as well as subtract from individual budget lines. And one of the concerns about that was the Council not having the analytic capacity to really address some of those issues. And so I'm looking at this, and I'll, and I'll share this with the Council President's Office. Perhaps there's a win-win here in terms of beefing up Council Services analytic capability, not so much from the perspective of intentionally trying to duplicate functions that are already being provided in, in, in Finance, but to have that balance so that it's there when needed during budget time. Mr. Petro?
Hi, I just wanted to point out that with regard to the, whether, when Council Services fails to provide a report within 48 hours of the hearing, it does say in here that they, they have to provide a revised delivery date. And if they, if the Council President finds it unreasonable, he can set his own alternative date, which is something, but it still doesn't solve the problem of what happens then. But just wanted to point that out.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes. Yes.
So I don't know if this is going to Kaylin or if it's going to someone else. But what happens when the agencies don't provide the information that Council Services need to develop, to develop these fiscal notes or provide this information?
I think that's a fair question, Councilwoman. Thank you for it. It's similar to the situation now where we have various agencies that may, you know, technically, agencies are supposed to submit reports 15 days after they're referred, which is 15 days after, or roughly 15 days, 30 days, I think, depending on which agency, after they are referred a bill at a Council meeting. That is a rule that is seldom at this juncture followed. And so currently, I don't think this bill addresses, so I, just to point that out. And as a larger issue, I don't think our Council currently has a mechanism to truly address what happens if an administration directs an agency or if an agency in its own regard does not provide that information. What I would suggest Council Services would do, and what we do right now, is that Council Services simply informs the Chair and informs the President's Office when that information isn't available. And what we do in the President's Office is we try to ping the Mayor's Office of Government Relations to get that information as best we can. But I don't think there's a current enforcement mechanism in this bill or in practice right now to address that concern that you just raised.
Well, Councilwoman, did you have more questions?
I just had one, I just had one more, I just had one more question. Let's see, thanks for your answer. I just want to know, how would that, how would that impact the Committees voting on a legislation? If the agencies aren't, if the agencies don't provide that information to Council Services, and we, and you're saying, hey, we can't vote on this? How does that, how is that going to impact the voting on, for Committees?
Well, I think that goes to Councilman Costello's question about whether this would, whether it's necessary or whether it's appropriate for the bill to have some sort of, or Council Services to have some sort of veto mechanism, et cetera, which I, you know, said earlier, I don't think that's necessarily appropriate. It should still be on the Committee, and particularly the Committee Chair with regard to whether there is a vote. I do think that if an agency doesn't provide that information, it's the, the Council's prerogative to try to secure that information as best that it can. And, and right now, I don't think that there's a way that we can do that. And if they choose not to do that, then I don't think that there should be a, if this bill is read as preventing the Council from being able to act where an agency doesn't act, then we should amend the bill so that way it doesn't prevent the Council from doing what it needs to do.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Mr. Chair, that's, that's all the questions I have right now.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. Young, this has had, this, this conversation has reminded me of a conversation I know I have had with some of your predecessors. I honestly can't recall if you and I have had the conversation about one way to sort of smooth out the workload for the, the agencies in providing reports would be to require that administration bills come in with all of their agency reports. And that would simply require the administration to circulate legislation internally and collect reports and have all of that come in with the bill being introduced. The, the, the tactical concern has been making sure that there is no discontinuity between what the Council President's Office chooses to refer a piece of legislation to. It would basically mean we would have to make certain that there was an ongoing communication behind the scenes with the Mayor's Office so that agencies knew in advance which bills that they were going to be required to, to provide comments on. But I don't think that's an unreasonable hindrance. But I'm just, I'm just taking this opportunity to throw that out into broader, for a broader consideration. Do we have any other, oh.
I'm just saying, thank you.
Oh, okay. Do we have any other questions from anyone on the Committee for any of the Agency Reports so far? If not, it looks like we still have, we're waiting on a report from Civil Rights. Is Mr. McCray available? Is there anybody here from Civil Rights? Office of Civil Rights.
Mr. Chair, I don't see anybody from that office on the call right now, but I will reach out to Director McCray and try to get something for the Committee's files as soon as possible.
Okay, well, it doesn't look like we're going to be moving forward with this this afternoon. So we'll be scheduling an additional either work session or substantial voting session, depending on how the conversations work in the Council President's Office to address the concerns that have already been raised. Okay, let's see what we have in terms of other attendees. I don't see anyone who is calling in on the attendee list. So everybody who is attending or participating in this hearing should have the technical capability of raising their hand. This day, they would like to be recognized. And so at this point, anybody who would like to provide testimony on this bill should raise their hand. And, well, Mr. Petro, and Mr. Petro has just lowered her hand. Okay. All right, I have Dan. So Sam, if you could unmute Dan. Dan, please introduce yourself before giving your testimony.
Hi, everyone. This is Dan Sparacco.
Oh, hi, Dan.
I just, for the benefit of those laypeople who are, the thousands, I'm sure, are also called in to listen to this. I wanted to highlight what Bob, the Budget Director, said because this was an issue when the Law Department, when I was in the Law Department and the City Council got its own attorney because it was concerned about the quality of advice it was getting from the City Law Department. And at bottom, this is just going to be another opinion. And so I would, I would request that, that some thought be given to, how, how is this practically going to work? When, yes, I think, I mean, the people in Council Services are accountable to the Council President. The Council President is a very powerful role. And the challenge they're going to have is, is, is one, it is just another opinion coming from a potentially interested party. And two, they're never going to have better information than the Finance Department. So they're ultimately going to rely on the Finance Department for data. Now, I think in this bill is a, presents an interesting example of what I could, I imagine would happen routinely. So Finance here has said this would cost another $300,000 in their estimation. Well, you know, surely, a contrary opinion would be, it's not going to cost anything because the office currently has all the resources it needs. So there you just have two competing opinions. So I'm just, I absolutely think it's important that a objective, nonpartisan fiscal note exists, as it does in Annapolis. It's just, it's just going to be very difficult to do that when you don't have, when that, that, that note isn't being generated by a nonpartisan entity. Not to say that you all aren't collegial and the Council President would be actively screwing bills they didn't like, but you know, this is politics, and things like that can happen. And so I would just, and I would ask you to look back at the creation of that separate Council job and then consider what its purpose was and whether it accomplished what you sought, or in fact, if you're not all heavily relying on the City Law Department because they are the repositories of the information and expertise. You have no choice but to use in the absence of a true Department of Legislative Services that is neither accountable to the executive. Because I actually get it. I know a lot of people don't put a lot of faith in what the Finance Department says, no matter what, because it's the executive side of the House. I don't know that that's improved by putting it in the Council President's Office. It's something to consider. That's why I would just suggest, just create a, create a nonpartisan Department of Legislative Services. At least something to think about for, for the future. Thanks for, thanks for the time.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Yes, I can't see who that is who's speaking there.
That's me, Mr. Chair. So, thank you, Dan, for that comment. I just want to clarify one thing, and if, if Mayor's Office of Government Relations or someone could just verify with Law Department what I'm about to say, which is, my understanding is that the Office of Council Services, while it is part of the President's Office by extension, the Director of that Office is actually reports to both the Mayor and the Council President. There's a level of kind of joint oversight that occurs between the two of them. There's a background noise happening.
I don't, I don't hear the, oh, I do hear that background noise now. I can't see who's.
It's Dan, just to unmute it.
Oh, is that me? I apologize.
So, so if someone could just verify that, I just wanted to point that out because I wouldn't want folk to see this as simply moving those tasks to the President's Office because I don't think it's necessarily what it is. And then additionally, you know, as we look at kind of the fiscal part of this, which I think we've kind of honed a lot of the conversation on, I agree, I think on a certain level, what Dan said makes a lot of sense, which is, A, that if Finance believes and feels that they are doing a lot of this report, well, we don't report, I mean, we don't refer everything to Finance right now. And perhaps that's a practice that we can change as, as we refer everything to Law Department. we refer everything to Law Department, and that might solve part of this conversation. But again, part of this still also has to do with the equity piece, and we want to make sure that that is a part of the conversation. And it did, and finally, I do want to just throw out there, I don't know if it would take, having now reviewed the Finance Department's report, we're not sure that we agree that the three additional analyst assumption is what would be necessary. But again, that's a conversation we want to continue to have with the Finance Department after this hearing.
I think just, just to, just to follow up quickly, I'm pretty sure, Kaylin, I think you're thinking of the, the Director of Legislative Reference?
Yeah.
That's now has this dual accountability, but Council Services is really just, you know, it's within the Council President's Office and that's basically, that's basically it.
I'm pretty sure the director of, and I just wanted somebody to verify, I think the Council Services Director also is in the same type of a setup.
Yeah. Well, I'm not going to, I'm not going to argue if Mr. Pietro has something to the contrary, but previous incarnations of the council rules made it very clear that the Director of Council Services reported to the city council's Oversight Committee, which faded, which at, at some point faded into the, you know, into the darkness and disappeared. But the Oversight Committee itself was the chairs of the council committees plus those additional members of the Council President appointed. And since the council member, Council President appointed everyone on the Oversight Committee, the understanding was that the Council Services reported to the Council President and eventually the Oversight Committee leaf went away and now the office is just directly under the Council President's Office.
Right. Mr. Chair, this is Elena De Pietro. It's actually in Article One of the, of the code, this concept of the Office of Council Services. But you're right, it is appointed by the Oversight Committee, whatever that, that is no longer in existence. I haven't heard of it's operating in quite a few years. But it does also say that the Director serves at the pleasure of the city council as expressed by the Oversight Committee, whatever. I'm not really sure what that means, but I, my takeaway is that if the, if the committee decides that they want to release somebody, they can. So, on behalf of the city council. So that, that's what the code currently says.
Is, was there anyone else who wanted to testify? Seeing none, I'm inclined to.
Mr. Chairman, I do see Mara James from BBMR has her hand raised.
She does? Oh. Oh, she does? Okay, that's, I'm, again, and I apologize for this, different platforms show the hand raised in different places, and I keep forgetting that with WebEx, I have to go look on the list because I'm not going to see anything in the, the grid square in front of me. Ms. James?
Thank you. And we just wanted to add one more note that's in our bill response in working more on this legislation. What this legislation clearly defines is the contents of the fiscal note, but the contents of the equity assessment are not as specifically laid out. They direct, they direct to the Equity Assessment Program, which has some explanation that equity assessment is, but then have its clearly defined specifics. And so to have that continuity and consistency between administrations and between folks that are working in the office, as turnover happens, we think that including more specifics about what's included in there would be a good thing to consider.
Seeing no other hands raised and understanding that we're going to not move forward with this issue until after the Council President's Office has a little bit more time to work on it, I'm going to ask Dan to lower his hand as we move on to the next piece of legislation, which will actually be the first one scheduled for the afternoon, 20-0496, Records Management, Modernizing, Correcting, and Conforming. I see here that we have no objection from the Comptroller's Office and the Finance Department. We have favorable reports from DLR and favorable with comments from either ECB or the Mayor's Office of Government Relations, I can't tell from this. And then approval with amendments from the Law Department. So I guess I'll start by asking, is there anyone here from an agency that wishes to change their report from what's been submitted? Because if not, I'd like to start with the Law Department and their amendments, their proposed amendments for this bill. So Ms. Rully, are you available?
I am right here, Mr. Chair. How are you?
I am well. Yourself?
Good. So the Records Management Bill, we had several amendments to, just to conform it to state law. And, you know, I don't know if most people realize, but state law really governs all the records in local governments. It says how you're supposed to handle them, you're supposed to come up with a record schedule determining what you have, what you want to keep, when you want to throw away the stuff you don't need to keep, that kind of thing. And so really, the changes are just to make it conform to this state law. Unfortunately, the, the entities listed as affiliated entities, and I go through them in my bill report, but those aren't entities the city council has legislative power over, but it doesn't mean they escape that state law. So, well, they wouldn't be captured in here mandatorily if any of them wanted to, you know, work with the city archivist or the state archivist in any way to, to help make their record schedules. That, that's fine. It's just not something we could put in the city bill. And we're talking about like the police department, the liquor license commissioners, HABC, that kind of thing. So that's the bulk of, of the amendments in the report, and the rest of it really just conforms to state law. It makes the definition of record the same as what the state law has and conforms the disposal process and all of that with state law. So I've actually, Tony at Legislative Reference reached out to me and he took all my amendments and made them all, you know, in Legislative Reference format, and I'm fine with what, what he has. Same substance, just written up better. So I can take any questions if anybody has them. Otherwise, we support it, obviously.
Thank you. And I'm realizing I was remiss in actually not letting DLR go first because the, this is actually at their request. And so if someone from DLR would like to give a quick summary of what the bill is intending to accomplish for the rest of the committee, would that be Mr. DeFranco or Mr. Shoverline?
Mr. Chair, you'd be surprised to know that I know little to nothing about records management, but luckily I brought along some people that do. I brought along Tony Roberts, who is the act, who is currently the Records Management Officer for the city, Dr. Rob Shoverline, who is the acting state archivist, and also Tim Baker, who is the state archivist. And they would be much better placed in discussing this bill before the committee. So I invite them to chime in as much or as little as they'd like.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure that I extend that invitation as fully, you know, as much as they like, might be more than we have the capacity to fully enjoy at this moment. But would one of those three be willing to step up and do like a 60-second synopsis of what we're trying to accomplish? Tim raised his hand first, so we're going to go with Mr. Baker. Because I can see your lips moving and you're not muted, but I can't hear anything. Okay, Mr. Baker is officially experiencing technical difficulties. So Mr. Shoverline, I'm sorry, Doctor. Can't hear him either. Now I'm beginning to wonder, is this our problem or theirs? Tony, can you come back on for a minute?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just checking to make sure I can hear you. Just a second. We're going to recess for a minute. Okay, coming back into session, yeah, we can't find the problem on our end. So the, the, the third possibility is, Mr. Roberts, are you able to, to unmute yourself and testify?
I believe I am. Can you hear me, Mr. Chair?
We can. Would, 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 would you like to do the quick summary for the committee of what this bill is attempting to do?
I would be happy to. In essence, it's to bring the city code into compliance with state law, to update the wording in the code as it now exists, which in many cases is obsolete. And for instance, there is no mention of digitalization of records and, and, and to, so it's to change wording and bring the, the city code into compliance with state law.
Okay. We've got that, and we, I understand from, from Ms. Rully that the Law Department's amendments to make sure everything is fully compatible have already been accepted and transferred into DLR language by Mr. DeFranco, which means the next thing I do is I ask the committee if Councilman McCray or Councilman Burnett have any questions so far for either law or Legislative Reference? Okay, seeing no questions so far, and that being all of the other agency reports being either no objection or no comment, let's go to, are there any other members of the panel who have questions for Legislative Reference or for law? Okay, see, Mr. Tiso from Planning Department.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Members of the committee, we were not opposed to the overall concept, but we had some questions on how the, the practicalities of this would go. We note that there was a requirement for an inventory of records, and I am hoping that I'm not going to have to inventory a couple rooms full of things that we have. If you could give me a little bit on how that would work, I would appreciate it.
Okay, so I'm trying to, I guess, Mr. Roberts?
Okay. What that inventory would mean would be meeting with department heads or bureau chiefs, going over the title of records that they have, what they call the records, what the record does, and to update any retention schedules that currently exist. There are over 2,000 in our records right now. There are over 2,000 retention schedules. And to see if there have been any new records added to a department or generated by a department where a retention schedule has not been written. And then in that case, to write that retention schedule and get it approved by the state archivist.
Okay, that makes sense. Yeah, I was worried that I'd have to go make a list of every file and every folder. I, I think that helps. Thank you.
Thank you. Continuing to go down the list of panelists, that was it. Just a reminder to please lower your hand after your questions have been asked and answered. I'm now looking at the attendee list again. We still have no phone-in members, so everyone who is on the attendee list should be able to raise their hand. And seeing no hands raised, I am going to close the public testimony. And I believe there is an interest in moving forward with this bill as quickly as possible so as to bring us into compliance as quickly as possible. And given the upcoming transition of administrations, this would probably be a good time for us to make certain that we are doing our records retention as accurately and in line as possible. So let's see, do we have all the amendments that law asked for in the packets that the council people have, the members of the committee? I'm seeing the law report.
Yeah, it's, it's the same substance as attached to the report. Yeah, that's the same substance, but, but Tony formatted it much better, so I'm happy to go with his.
Well, when you say with his, do you mean not the ones that are on page six of your report?
It's the same substance as page six, but he makes it look more better.
I, I, I appreciate the distinction that you're making. What I'm trying to find is, do we have those?
I don't, I don't know if the committee has them, but that looks like them.
Okay, Sam's, Sam's got them and they're up on the screen now.
Yes, that's that.
So I would accept a motion for the amendments?
I move the amendments, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Councilman Burnett. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman McCray. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the amendments are approved. Accept a motion on the bill as amended.
I move the amended bill, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Councilman Burnett. Is there a second?
Second, McCray.
Seconded by Councilwoman McCray. Sam, will you read the roll?
Chair, Chair Henry?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burnett?
Yes.
And Member McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, this bill moves favorably as amended, three, nothing.
Excellent. And so this bill will be moving to second reader at the next meeting of the city council. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much, and we will be moving on now to City Council Bill 19-0353, Charter Amendment, Underground Conduit System Sale, Transfer, or Franchise Prohibited. I have a report of no objection from the Law Department and unfavorable from the Department of Finance, favorable from transportation. And at this point, I don't have a listing for reports from BCIT or the BDC. Nope, okay, got it. BCIT is, is supportive and so is the BDC. So we had what was intended to be a hearing on this bill earlier this month, but it was not as well advertised as we had hoped it would be, and so we're doing a do-over now. Mr. Stegman or Mr. Davis, who would like to speak on this to give us the, you know, 60-second summary of what we're here to talk about?
Mr. Chair, Matt Stegman from Mayor's Office of Government Relations. It would be my pleasure to briefly summarize this bill. So this was introduced by then-Council President Young, now Mayor Young. The intention behind the bill, the city owns and maintains and franchises a network of underground conduit, and this bill... And this bill would prohibit the future sale or transfer of that asset. You know, the intention behind the bill is that we have something that is a municipal asset that generates revenue for the city, that provides a public good, and that, you know, it should be up to the voters to decide whether to keep that public asset in public hands. This is similar to other bills that the council has taken up regarding the municipal parking garages and the municipal water system. So, that's the very brief summary.
All right, thank you. Let's see now. So, all of the agencies are in support except for opposition from the Finance Department. So, why don't we hear from Mr. Sennemy?
Hi, good afternoon. This is Bob Sennemy, Budget Director, again representing the Department of Finance. So, we reviewed this bill when it was first submitted. And first want to acknowledge that in the short term, this doesn't have any fiscal impact. It's basically looking at what we would do with this asset in the long term. And there's a long history with this, with the conduit system. As folks know, a few years back, the city raised the rates in the conduit system so that we could be able to add more money for infrastructure improvement. There was a dispute for a period of time with BGE, which is one of the largest contributors or users of the system, that was ultimately resolved. The reason we're opposed to this particular legislation is really because it just ties the hands of the city in a way that we don't think is necessary. There have been, in the past, offers to, you know, to purchase the asset or arrangements, and they weren't in the city's, they were clearly not in the city's best interest at that time. But given the fact that this particular asset is very valuable, and the technology changes pretty rapidly too, in terms of some of the things that are in that conduit, we just don't think that we should shut off that option to a future administration or to city leaders in the future. I can, I could foresee a possible arrangement where somebody purchasing this entity, this asset, would provide an infusion of cash for city, you know, infrastructure needs while also shifting the burdens away on maintenance, away from the Department of Transportation. We did, when we had the conversation earlier that was eventually cut off, there were some good conversations about, obviously, we wouldn't want to sell the asset and then have to pay to get back into it. But those are all things that can be worked out with a good, solid contractual agreement if it came to that. I want to acknowledge that there's nothing in the works right now that I'm aware of about anything even close to what I'm saying. But I can see an option in the future where that might be beneficial to the city, especially given, you know, some of the broadband that kind of runs through the conduit system today. So, based on that, I don't think that we should turn around tomorrow and sell the system, but I just don't think the charter amendment is really necessary because there could be a point in the future that we'd want to consider such an option. So, that was our perspective and happy to take any questions on that.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from the committee for Mr. Sennemy or for any of the other agency reps or for Mr. Stegman?
Councilwoman Burnett. I'm sorry, thank you. This is Mr. Chair. Sorry, I didn't quite understand the Mr. Sennemy's comments about the value of it and that sort of being the logic to not move forward with this. Can you just dive into that a little bit more for me? Mr. Sennemy, I was just trying to piece it together a little bit better.
Yeah, so our point on this was, this is, you know, the city has this asset. This bill would prevent us from, you know, monetizing that asset, basically, from selling it. And our point is that you don't want to tie your hands in that way because there could come a point in time where we can negotiate a favorable agreement where there might be a situation where we could still enter and do the work that the city needs to do. But there also could be another entity that would manage it and take some of the burden away from the city on the maintenance side. So, again, we haven't seen, you know, to be honest, we haven't seen kind of a fair offer for that up to this point. And I have experience just on the periphery with one because BGE did, you know, when we were negotiating, that topic did come up. But again, it's one of those things where it just seems like we don't, something that's not required. And it could limit our flexibility in the future if we can come up with an arrangement where we would monetize this asset. So, I just think it's unnecessary.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilman, any questions?
No questions at this time. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Stegman.
Yeah, if I could, you know, again, I know, you know, we had a lengthy discussion on this previously at the less-well-attended hearing, but, you know, I did just want to say again, you know, when you're looking at amending the city charter, it certainly would make it more difficult to dispose of this asset if there were a set of circumstances in the future that made it advantageous to do so. But it certainly would not forever foreclose that possibility. It would just, you know, you would have to then, you know, refer the question again to the voters. And it would, you know, be up to them to decide. So, this is not saying that, you know, you could, you know, never sell this asset. You just would need to change the charter back. And I think, you know, that it would make it more difficult to dispose of the asset is exactly the point of the amendment and why the mayor had introduced it when he was council president. So, thank you for your consideration today.
Well clarified, sir. I see that Mr. Davis has his hand up. Liam?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I, all due respect to finance, and I understand they do an excellent job. And I certainly appreciate all the work they do looking out for the city's finances. I do just want to mention, as far as this concept that the conduit creates some sort of burden on the Department of Transportation, it's not, to me, it doesn't really make much sense. There really isn't a funding burden on DOT because the funds that are used to maintain the conduit are all paid for by the users. There's no general funds used towards maintaining the conduit. So, it's not like we're shifting money away from street resurfacing or complete streets or streetlights to fund conduit. It's all being paid for by the users. So, that's just a point of clarification. You know, and furthermore, you know, we just have to be very careful about, you know, this public asset. It's a unique system that not every major city in the country has. And just because we haven't figured out the way to really tap into its fullest potential now, it doesn't mean we can't do it in the future. And kind of preventing the sale or making it harder to sell the system will allow us to kind of take our time as a municipality to find the best way to utilize it. And I think there's a lot of potential here personally. And I think the agency, DOT, sees a lot of potential. When we have discussions about municipal broadband, there are unique opportunities because we own the conduit. So, we stand alone from most major American cities in owning it. And it's a unique asset, and DOT would love the opportunity to kind of leverage it to the benefit of the public and maintain public ownership. So, that's all I'm going to say. Thank you for allowing me to talk today.
Thank you. And as always, don't forget to lower your hand once you've finished making your statement or asking your question. I see no other hands raised under either participants or attendees. And it is my expectation that we are not going to be voting on this or any of the other charter amendments today. There, as I think we have discussed at previous hearings and work sessions, we are past the deadline to submit charter amendments to the Board of Elections for consideration in this November's general election. And so, anything that the council were to pass and the mayor sign at this point would go to the next general election in 2022. And so, rather than continue to do work piecemeal, it's my expectation that the committee will have one final voting slash work session in late October. And any remaining charter amendments that the sponsors would like to see considered will vote them up or down on that day. And that will still allow us sufficient meetings in November to move forward with them if it is the council's desire to do so. And that will also allow time for the mayor to sign them if the mayor chooses before the conclusion of the term. And so, with that, let's move on to the next bill. And that would be City Council twenty dash zero five five zero Charter Amendment, City Council Modernization and Restructuring Act. This is sponsored by the mayor. Well, technically sponsored, but by the council president and introduced at the request of the mayor. We have two reports. We have not favorable from finance and comments from law. So, why don't we start with Mr. Stegman in giving a brief summary of the charter amendment?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, this proposed amendment, it stems out of the larger conversation that had been happening over the past year about, you know, sort of taking a fresh look at municipal government and some of the, you know, the actual structure of city government as, you know, your committee is aptly named. And the, basically, what this bill would do, it decreases the size of the city council from fourteen members to five members elected at the district level and then at-large, citywide elected presidents and vice presidents. So, it would be a total of seven members. This would...
Mr. Stegman, I seem to have lost you. Can anyone else still hear, Mr. Stegman?
I can't, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
A charter review commission that'll be...
Mr. Stegman, if you could pause for a second. Somehow, we lost you there for a while and missed a fair chunk of what you were saying. So, if you could go back to, the last thing I heard clearly was seven members total?
Okay, yeah, I apologize for that. So, anyway, yeah, this legislation would reduce the size of the city council to five members elected at the district level, a citywide elected president and vice president. That would be seven total members. The idea being that sort of brings us in line with our peer jurisdictions in the state that are, you know, Baltimore County has a population that is higher than ours. Their council has seven members. Anarundel has seven members. So, you know, the idea is to sort of right-size the council and, you know... It's another way to look at it. I know you had a piece of legislation. I believe that Councilman Dorsey also had a piece of legislation about the composition of the council. So, this is an ongoing conversation. The mayor just had an idea of a way that, you know, he thought might work, and he wanted to have that idea introduced into the conversation. And I just point out, you know, I don't know what the committee is going to ultimately decide to do with this piece of legislation, but there will be on the ballot this November legislation to create a charter review commission. And I imagine in one form or another that this is a, something that, a conversation that will continue. So, I appreciate your hearing this bill today, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, well, first, are there any questions from the committee? Or Mr. Stegman?
I'll have any questions for a second. Thank you.
All right, so seeing none, let's go to the Finance Department for their report. Ms. James?
Thank you. The Finance Department is opposed to this legislation. We have, throughout the past few months, we have been opposed to several charter amendments on the condition that we think that most of these decisions should go to a charter review commission to be discussed and reviewed, to consider how they influence one another, but also to have the input of more residents involved in these decisions. I'll note that we do have in this bill report a correct estimate based on what we would imagine would be a staffing structure. That's just one possibility. The only other thing that'd be pointed out is that this legislation does not present an actual, I think law includes this in their report. It does not present a process for should the vice president's seat become vacant. That's just not, it defines, what happens if the presidency is vacant is very clearly defined. But if the vice president should be different from any of the other council members, that is not specified. So, we just wanted to raise that as well. And that's all that I have to say. If there's any questions, happy to answer them. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And let's also take comments now from the Law Department. I have Mr. Travala listed, but I don't see him. So, would that be Mr. Pietro?
Yes, yes, sir. Victor is luckily on vacation this week. He's having a good time. I told him he didn't have to call in, so I would take it for him. So, anyway, he instructed me about all these bill rules. And basically, our comments were similar to finances. In terms of the legal issues with the bills, this bill, there is no legal issue except that we feel that the whole situation for the vice president, now that the vice president would be elected as a citywide position, should be revisited should the president have to step down and the vice presidency becomes vacant. That's the only issue we feel should be addressed before this is on to the back.
Understood. Thank you. So, first, I'll ask the committee, are there any questions for either finance or law? Councilman Burnett or Councilwoman McCray?
No questions.
Okay, I do have a question in the chat from one of the attendees that I guess technically would be for Mr. Stegman. And that is, would the seven council members be paid a different wage commensurate with the technically greater responsibilities, given that five of them, well, technically, six of them, would now be representing a larger group of constituents? So, is there an expectation that their salaries would increase relative to the fifteen-member council that we have today?
So, I thank Ms. Harris for that question. The legislation is silent on that issue. I think it would depend on, the actual implementation of it would, you know... I think it would depend on the actual implementation of it would, you know, be open whether it is that the actual officials holding those seats be paid more, that they have, you know, more staff capacity. You know, however it makes sense to implement it, but the legislation itself does not prescribe the salary for those positions.
Okay.
Chair, if I may, I have some, I can clarify that answer a little bit. This city has a charter provision that requires it's called the Compensation Commission for Elected Officials, and all elected officials' compensation is set by that by that commission. So it would be out of the hands of the council and in the hands of the commission and the timetable upon which they have to act. So.
So so basically, if the council moved forward with this or any other charter amendment which adjusted the composition of the council, and then the voters approved that, then what would need to happen would be the Compensation Committee would need to be convened to now do a new analysis of whether the salaries are appropriate, the existing salaries appropriate, given the change made to the composition.
Right. I mean, hopefully that I think that the potential passage would occur well in advance of the next term. So there would be plenty of time for the Compensation Commission to meet and provide for whatever they feel appropriate compensation is. The rub is you can't change officials' compensation when they're in office. So but I think under under the scenario here, that would be able to happen prior to, not this coming term, but the term after that.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Are there any other questions from participants? If so, if you're a participant or an attendee and you have questions or comments that you would like to provide as testimony, please take this opportunity to raise your hand on the screen. Mr. Pietro's hand was still raised from answering that last question. I'm seeing no other participants with their hands raised. And under the attendees list, Mr. Sparacco. Sam, please unmute Mr. Sparacco until I go like this, and then you can mute him again.
Very funny, Mr. Chair. I, you know, there's a thousand ways you can cut up the the city council and districts. You know, Montgomery County wants to add seats because they have a situation similar to the one this bill would create. But, you know, there is a lot of things to talk about. And I just have a question for the committee and the chair or whoever else is interested. You know, I think it's one thing we haven't, not quite a mayor-elect yet, but of course, the council president is, you know, very likely to become mayor-elect in due course. And he was elected in part, you know, for example, to his city administrator bill. You know, like, it made a lot of sense to me that he campaigns on something, wins citywide, and now wants that something to pass. That makes sense from a democratic perspective, small d democratic perspective. I'm starting to struggle what the point of some of this other stuff is at this point. I mean, I hate to say you're a lame duck council and Mr. Young is a lame duck mayor, but in a lot of ways you are. And, you know, in the middle of a pandemic, I just want to suggest that, you know, 40% of the city has no no chance, almost no chance of participating meaningfully here. I know there's a phone call option for those who don't have internet, but, you know, these are really big questions. And this is a less than ideal forum in which to answer them. And I would just, you know, I know the the facile answer to my question, you know, why? Why bind the next mayor and entire city council to a set of charter amendments that can't take effect until 2022? That the easy answer is, well, you have the power to do so. You have the seats. But, you know, that's not necessarily a satisfying answer. It wouldn't satisfy me if I was going to become mayor or council president or a member of the city council in December. And I don't know that it would satisfy me as a regular voter. I mean, I pay way too much attention to this stuff, so I know this is happening, but a lot of others don't. And I'm just curious if there's any thoughts about the overall, shall we say, legitimacy of of this effort. It's a fascinating, it's all a fascinating conversation. Like, I'm very interested in this academically, but it seems to me that this council is is pretty much out of time. And I don't imagine a rewrite of the entire council or change in the number of seats get passed in the next two months. But in theory, one could, as as could lots of other changes, such as term limits, which I see is on here, and I'm more bothered to testify again. I already have on the other bill. And I I do think this body needs to consider these matters I've raised because while you have the seats, that doesn't, you know, if Donald Trump, God, you know, God willing, loses and says, I still have the job, so I'm going to appoint a Supreme Court justice anyway. And the lamed up Senate says, yeah, and we're going to confirm. That's technically allowed, but that doesn't make it, that doesn't make me feel any better about it. So if you have any thoughts, if not, I'm just putting those on the record for, again, the thousands of people who are no doubt going to watch this. And thanks for your time.
Thank you. I know you're you'll be unsurprised if I say I have thoughts. But I also will say that since you did just for the record kind of compare us to President Trump and the Republican majority in the Senate, decorum limits the thoughts that I will share at this point. But what I will, what I will share is that unlike the very specific example of the nomination and confirmation of a Supreme Court justice, the the question of whether this council casts its legislation or, in this case, proposes charter amendments for the citizens of Baltimore to ratify are not as permanent and unyielding. If if we were to move forward with one of any of the remaining charter amendments and and it were to pass and the mayor were to sign it or the council were to override a veto and it were to go to the ballot in 2022, there would be two years worth of the next council for the people of Baltimore or the next council or some combination to propose alternate charter amendments to offer the public to choose from instead of the choices that are that are that are made by this council. So I, your point is taken. I will note that, and I don't mean this in a sense of it it lessens the validity of your concern as much as technically, we are no more or less of a lame duck council today than we were any day following June 8. And we had a month and a half or so, a little bit more of time after the Democratic and Republican primaries. We had a we had seven weeks or so to continue to pass charter amendments that actually are going to end up on the ballot this fall. But perhaps more to the point, we're also going to be continuing to consider lots of other legislation. There was a hearing earlier today for tax increment financing proposal that frankly, if we if we if we pass this and move forward with it and then the next council feels otherwise, it would be a lot harder for the next council to do anything about it than it would be for them to propose alternate charter changes for the citizens to consider in the 2022 general election. So those were my thoughts. I don't know if Councilman Burnett or Councilwoman McRae have any thoughts of their own that they wish to share. But unless they were to, oh, Councilman Burnett.
I mean, obviously, we don't, we don't have to have this discussion now. But, I mean, I would note, we've heard this a few times about the public attending virtual council hearings or in-person council hearings and sort of that being the measure of how we should act. And I mean, I get it. We all want more participation. And I think within, you know, new leadership at all three citywide positions, it's a competition that should absolutely be had about how we can just have people involved in government. But I don't think the bar should be how many people are logged on to a WebEx hearing at 2:00 in the afternoon on the Thursday. Because I'd argue that if this hearing was in person on a Tuesday or 5:00, it really just depends on so many factors as to what causes people to follow the data of everything in Baltimore City. And frankly, for some people, it may not be that pressing to follow here. But we do want more engagement. I do want to, you know, I'm not trying to say that we can't do better. We can for sure, but I don't know if that's the bar that we should be measuring whether we. I just laid it out there to the record because it's come up a few times.
Thank you. Councilwoman McRae, otherwise.
Dan, thank you for your comment.
Thank you. All right, seeing no other participants for this particular legislation, we're going to move on to City Council 20-0551 Charter Amendment Term Limits. We have no position from the Comptroller's Office, not favorable from finance and approved for form and legal sufficiency from the Law Department and no position from elected officials' retirement system, which I'm intrigued by and may return to myself later. But let me go back to Mr. Stegman again for a summary of this legislation.
So thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, as I mentioned previously, you know, so the impetus of this goes back to the conversation that's been having that's been ongoing in the council and elsewhere about some of the structures of government. The mayor has, you know, wanted to make sure that this proposal was part of that discussion. I know that this committee has taken up the issue of term limits previously. Very simply, this bill just says that any city elected official, that there is a limit of two consecutive terms in in any particular office.
So I'm going to ask my question now since elected official retirement system took no position on this. My understanding currently of the system is that you need 12 years or three terms in order to vest in the system. And so if if there were a limit of two terms for any position, effectively, what that would be doing is saying that individual council members would never vest in the retirement system. The only people who would ever vest would be district council members who then went on to citywide office so that they could serve another that third term in that fashion. Is that the is that actually a purposeful intention of the proposal? Or is that an unintended consequence that you would like to try to address? Or in in plainer language, is that a bug or a feature?
I would say it is an open question that the that the council can, in its wisdom, decide if they want to change the eligibility or or make it so that, you know, not necessarily everyone who, you know, holds elected office in the council will eventually qualify for a pension. I think, you know.
Well, I mean.
For the council to discuss amongst itself.
That that's already the case. I mean, not everyone serves three terms, you know, that.
I'm sorry, I guess, correct.
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah, that that part's already the case. It's more of a question of, and I guess you've you've kind of answered my question, but I'll I guess I guess want to push a little bit more into this because right now, I am, without doing an actual search, but just sort of going off the top of my head, I would say that most of the members of the elected officials' retirement system are former council members who did not also go on to serve in some citywide capacity. And so unless, actually, not that not not unless. So one of the repercussions of this would be just because there's fewer citywide positions is that it would also dramatically reduce the number of people who qualify. And so I hear what you're saying in terms of this is something for the council to consider. And I, but I think it's fair to ask if it's the mayor's intention to reduce the number of people participating in the elected officials' retirement system. And the reason I ask that is if we were, if the council was inclined to move forward with this, but the reason that they were inclined to move forward with this is because other workarounds could be created. Like, for example, we could, through legislation, reduce the number of years needed to vest in order to participate in the system. We could reduce it from 12 to eight. And my recollection is from previous conversations with staff at the elected officials' retirement systems. You can fiddle with the the age levels of when people would be allowed to do so such that you reduce the number of years needed to vest and you can, actuarially speaking, make it cost neutral. You just have to find out what the age is where this is the point where it makes sense for people to begin to participate. But there would be no reason to move forward with that legislation if the mayor's intention was to avoid that. And so that would be.
It was it was not the, yeah, it was not the specific intention of the legislation to limit number of people who could participate in the in the pension system.
Okay, all right. Let's see. Oh, sorry. You had more?
I was just gonna say, you know, yeah, as you pointed out, I mean, I think you're probably correct. I haven't looked into this myself, but I think you're probably correct that a majority of the or the greatest number of people participating in that system probably are members of the city council who have served the appropriate amount of time, who have not gone on to serve in citywide capacities. I think, you know, if you're asking what the intention of the term limits are, it is so that we have, you know, a greater and possibly more frequent turnover in those citywide offices. So it is very possible that you will, you know, that that there may not be a significant change in the number of people who participate as you have more frequent turnover in service in some of those citywide offices. as you have more frequent turnover in service in some of those citywide offices.
If, if the, if the committee were so inclined, would the administration be interested in considering an amendment to increase the number of terms from two to three for council members, leaving the number of limit of terms for citywide elected officials at two?
I can certainly take that back and get an answer to you. I think.
I think that would be good information. That would be good information for the committee to have. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Certainly.
So let's go to agency reports. Let's see, let's start with Ms. James in Finance.
Thank you. The Department of Finance came out in opposition to this bill, similar to the other current members that I've, that we've discussed over the past few months. We believe that this legislation, as well as the others, should generally be reviewed through a Charter Review Commission to be able to best assess these types of questions that are being raised and how it would impact things that may be unintended consequences. And also recognizing that having to, when this was first introduced, the other term limit bill was just being introduced and hadn't been voted on by the council. So having those two bills at the same time just seemed a bit confusing for us to have both possibly go to the voters. So having that as a Charter Review Commission discussion seemed to make more sense. Thank you.
Thank you. But you, you do realize that having the conversation as part of a Charter Review Commission does not remove the possibility of the council having a preference between one or the other, and also the possibility that the council could say, well, the Charter Review Commission recommended flip, but we think flop. So what we're going to do is we're going to pass both and let the voters decide.
Certainly, we just think that the, having the Charter Review Commission could have all that information compiled and put together in a way that would be helpful.
Okay, I'm sorry. And then next would be Mr. Pietro in the Law Department. Well, users disapprove for form and legal sufficiency, but did you have additional comments?
I do have a comment on the discussion about the retirement system and the impact, you know, the intersection of the two bills. So, I mean, certainly, the council would be well within its authority to go, go into the retired, the elected officials' retirement system law and make the appropriate adjustments after consulting with, you know, the people that know about all the financial side of it all. But the suggestion that there, that you could amend the charter amendment, the existing bill to provide for that, I'm not sure is possible because that bill, that bill, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I, I, I'm sorry if anything I said left that impression, but that wasn't my expectation.
Okay, because.
It would have to be different legislation.
So there would have to be separate legislation. That's all the point I want to make. Some people want to be confused. You could maybe do some sort of contingency thing, but I'm not sure you can do that either, but.
Well, I mean, technically, the contingency could work the other direction because even if the charter amendment passes and gets approved, there's still two, you know, two years between when that happens and when it actually goes into effect.
Plenty of time, definitely.
For the council to do other legislative remedies.
Yeah, that's true. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Members of the committee, are there any questions for Ms. James, Mr. Pietro, or for Mr. Stegman?
Sorry, I'm trying to unmute.
Okay, seeing none, going to the list of panelists, looking for people with their hands raised. Seeing none, going to the attendees list, where we still have no call-in members. So we're, we will be asking Sam, oh, wait, Dan took his hand down. So there are no hands raised on the attendee list or the participants list. So I am going to make one final ask of the committee if there are any other questions or issues to raise at this point before we move on to the next bill. And seeing none, we will move on to our final. Wow, sorry. This is me seeing the list of agency reports for City Council Bill 20-0563, Charter Amendment Disposition of City-Owned Real Property. This bill was referred to DHCD, real estate, the Comptroller's Office, the Law Department, Finance, DOT, and DGS. The Law Department has approved it for form and legal sufficiency with the possibly paraphrased comment that they aren't happy about it. And then the, all of the other agencies have opposed this bill. So we will go through agency reports after giving the sponsor councilman, Isaac Schleifer of the Fifth District, an opportunity to tell us a little bit about this bill and, and, and why we should be supporting it and why we should not be concerned about the fact that every city agency it was referred to opposes it other than law. Councilman Schleifer?
Hey, how are you? Thanks for that introduction. So I actually think that that's, that's encouraging, that, you know, that there's so much interest and so many reports on this bill. The bill is actually quite simple. The, the issue that this would solve is that the city currently now has billions of dollars worth of real estate. The, all of that real estate is technically the, the ownership of, you know, those in the city. I mean, all the taxpayers. And so when a mayor has the ability to go ahead and just sell off any piece of real estate, and they can do that in a private sale without any communication, what that, what that causes is, number one, it's a transparency issue. And number two, communities that are the ones that actually have to live around these properties, they have no say in what's going on in their communities. And so simply what, what, simply put, all we need to really do is remove the word "private" and then have the, you know, have a public process. And at the end of the day, the mayor still has the final say on who, who a piece of property would get sold to. The process still stays the same. The only difference would be was that there would have to be a public process and there would have to be public communication. And so that's what we're seeking to do. And that basically sums it up. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Councilman. Are there any questions from Councilwoman McCray or Councilman Burnett?
I had some questions for Law about the current reason they report, so I'll just hold off for.
Well, what we'll do then is we'll, we'll do Law first. And Councilwoman McCray, do you already know that you have questions for any particular agency?
I have no questions at this time.
Okay, then what we'll do is we'll start with Law. Let Councilman Burnett ask his questions of Law. And then what we'll do is we'll go through all of the other agency reports just in a row, and then we'll take questions at the end of that. And so let's go to the Law Department. Ms. Rully?
Yes, hi, Mr. Chair. I think I can sum up our report in sort of a comment to Councilman Schleifer. If you go with a public sale, you no longer have the option to sell it to whomever you want. You don't retain that option. You have to sell it to the highest bidder, essentially. That's a public sale. If the intention is to just make more discussion public about a future sale or have some sort of hearing before a sale, that's different. But the way that this is written, essentially, a public sale of property would be a sale that goes to the highest bidder. And so our concern, obviously, it's totally legal if you want to do it this way. Our concern is, is you really then do not have the mayor, no one has control. It just goes to the highest bidder. And I'm not sure that's based on what Councilman Schleifer said, his intent.
Correct.
So our concern with the bill is that it, you know, it in fact then doesn't allow the city to sort of support any of the normal causes, you know, help out a church by selling it a small strip of land next door for a parking lot. I mean, basically, anybody could come in, bid a dollar more, so to speak, and prevent the uses of, productive uses of land in the way that the government sees fit. In each particular sale, as it stands now, the government can always put something up for public auction, but they don't have to. So as it stands right now, it's flexible. Again, you can change it. You can force it to be a public sale, but then you're stuck with highest bidder. So that's our comments.
So if I could just clarify, and thank you, Hillary, for that. The intention is exactly what I think you, what you alluded to is that it's not to, you know, just put properties up and sell to the highest bidder because it's not about the set dollar amount, but it is the highest and best use. And so in, in finding what that highest and best use, with allowing a completely private with no public input process to take place, that's where the issue that we're trying to address is. And so we're certainly going to need to amend the bill accordingly to, to address, to address that so the languages accurately reflects that. But the intention is not the highest bidder. The intention is the highest, best use. And if a community is left out of the process, then you, you simply put have the mayor or whoever's doing it on behalf of the mayor dictating to a community what they determine to be the highest and best use instead of actually hearing from the community as to what the highest and best use is.
Yeah, you would definitely want to change it because the way, way it reads now, it would be a public auction. And if that wasn't the intent, then you, you definitely want to change that. I will note, however, there is actually a public process now. There's a bill hearing, a public bill hearing on every property sale that goes through this section of the charter. If your intention was to touch other sections of the charter on property disposition, they're not affected by this, so.
Right, so yeah, the, the intention is to have that prior to, prior to that property bill allowing for the sale because like we've seen, including sales that took place this year or sales that are in the process of taking place, there may be a bill hearing on allowing that property to be sold. But that also can be done, and it has been done in the past, with no transparency about how it's being sold, what the use is going to be, what the sale price is going to be. And so that, that's, I guess, where we need to, we need to find a way to get to, to a place where we can address having a public process prior to a bill introduction, allowing for the sale of a property because it's kind of pointless to have a here, it's a hearing on a public, you know, on, on selling a piece of property unless we're able to get the facts and the details about what that sale is going to be. And it also doesn't give the community the opportunity to weigh in on what they believe should be the, you know, the highest and best use. And so that's really just approving something that may or may not have any transparency behind it, and it also doesn't give them any options.
Councilman Burnett, you had a question for the Law Department?
I was sort of answered with that, the reason back and forth. I had really serious concerns about the points raised on the transfer of ownership to positive causes. But it sounds like there may be some language that can be developed to address that. And that was my, my primary concern when it was being proposed here is that we are not putting the city in a situation where we're no longer able to support community-based organizations that may want to use city, city property for some, some sort of positive purpose.
Okay, thank you. So let me do this now. I'm going to go down the list of agency reports. When I call your name, what I would ask is if you have some particular aspect of your report which has not already been discussed, please speak to that. Otherwise, if, if we've already covered the points you would make, feel free to just say, we stand by our report. And let's start with Mr. Horton of the Office of Real Estate.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Walter Horton, Department of Real Estate. I really stand by the bill. However, there is a couple of aspects that we did not cover in the bill. Coming out of the Comptroller's Office, every time we do a transaction, a sale, and irregardless of who it is and for what amount, we touch base with the councilperson before the bill is introduced to brief the councilperson of the sale, who it's going to, what the uses of. That's the juncture where you can have that public dialogue as opposed to changing the charter. I think the policy should be for all city agencies, including BDC and everybody else that's selling real estate, to do that as a matter of protocol and as a matter of respect to the councilperson who's an elected official. So that's not in our bill report, but that's what we do as a matter of practice.
Okay, thank you. Councilman, what we're going to do is we're going to go through all the agencies and then come back and let committee members and other council members address the, the agencies. But I'd like to get through all of them first so we know how many have new things to contribute and who is just standing by their report. So next, Stephanie Murdoch, DHCD.
Hi, Councilmen, thank you, and members of the committee. DHCD stands by our report. We don't have too much more to add other than the fact that DHCD would not really be negatively impacted by this bill, but our brother and sister agencies, such as DOT and HABC, may be negatively impacted. And we stand by our report in opposition to the bill.
Okay, thank you. Jim Knighton from the Comptroller's Office?
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members. We, we stand by our, our position of opposition. I think Mr. Horton stated it really well, and as did Councilman Burnett. Our concern is that you may have a, a small community-based nonprofit that wants to, you know, purchase a vacant lot for a community garden. And under this bill as written, they could end up getting into a bidding competition, you know, with a better capitalized entity. So that, that's, that's the essence of our position.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have Ms. James from the Finance Department.
Thank you. The Department of Finance is opposed to this legislation. While it doesn't have a fiscal impact, and we stand by our report and say that a bunch of the other agencies will have, will have, are able to speak better to our some concerns about the impact this would have on process. I don't believe that someone from BDC is on this call. Please correct me if I'm wrong, but I do know that for them, they do an RFP process for all of their sales, I believe, is how they, or for many of their sales, they will do an RFP process. But there have been times in the past when they have done these public processes, and then they have found later that certain parcels were not a part of that sale and needed to be added to complete the project. So a private sale was needed to be added on to that. So that's just a technical issue that should be considered that this bill would, could cause problems for developments like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Davis from the Department of Transportation?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. Let me get my video started up here so you guys see me. So, you know, obviously, a lot of great points raised. Our concern from the Department of Transportation is what. Our concern from the Department of Transportation is what this would do to our opening, closing and street, or opening, closing, and sale of streets. Right now, that is used for a number of, a variety of reasons, and private sales just sometimes make the most sense. When we're looking at, I know Stephanie Murdoch's on here from HCD, a lot of times, we will close alleys and streets. Sorry, I have a trash truck driving by right now, so I'm just gonna change rooms in a second. Sorry about that.
We can't hear it. You may be loud for you, but not for us.
Okay, sorry about that. So anyway, when there's an opening, a closing, or a sale of a street, oftentimes, what we're doing is we're making a parcel of land more attractive to a developer. And while, like, in theory, it probably sounds enticing to get the highest bidder to pay for it, a lot of times, we're doing this for parcels to turn, to facilitate an affordable housing project. So there's times where it doesn't necessarily make sense to get the highest price for the public land that you're selling, if you want to do specific projects for the public good. So that's just like one example of where this could, you know, make things a little bit more complicated and a little bit more difficult. But yes, definitely, when we ran this bill by our right-of-weighted division, which works on the opening, closing, and sale of streets, they're very concerned about what this might lead to, as well as concerns that it could lead to competitors outbidding one another to prevent a project from actually happening, which is another interesting concern that I'm not sure folks have taken into account. Thank you.
Okay, and then last but not least, we have DGS. And Ms. Chester, you're the only one with their camera on, so I'm gonna call on you. Do you have anything to add, or you stand by your report?
We stand by our report. We have no opposition or support.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any of the other agencies? Okay, looks like we don't have any questions. Councilman Schleifer, do you have any questions for any of the agencies?
I mean, it just appears that I think there was that miscommunication that Hillary cleared up about the, you know, what the definition would actually mean that would force it to an actual auction. Certainly, that's not the intention. And so we're gonna certainly need to go back and have Legislative Reference work with us on editing that language, and then hopefully, the agencies will change their stance and support transparency. I do appreciate, you know, Mr. Horton's idea that the agencies would, you know, just communicate, but if only it were that simple, there'd be a lot less pieces of legislation put in by the council. But the reality is, is that there are deals that have occurred and ones that are in the process of occurring, and ones that will occur, that happen in council districts that do not get sent to the councilperson until the absolute last minute, most of the times once the deal is done. And so that's what I would just say on that, is that it's certainly something that has to be in law. There has to be the process where the public can get a chance to weigh in and give input prior to arrangements being made by the mayor's office, by the Comptroller's Office, or whoever. And so we're gonna go back to the chopping block and work through how to amend it where that's the correct interpretation.
Okay, and like, as I said, I'm, actually, I said this earlier in the hearing before you joined us, that it was not our intention to vote on any of the charter amendments today anyway, because there is no real time pressure regarding them, regardless of when they pass out of the council, the soonest they could be considered by the voters is 2022. So my intention is to have a work session and voting session in late October, where we will deal with all remaining charter amendments at that point, and make certain that depending on whether the sponsor wishes to proceed, we have an up-down vote. And so that gives you time to work with law and any of the agencies to make certain that there is an amendment crafted that, as you so, I think, eloquently put it, gives the agencies the, what they need in order to be on the side of openness and transparency. So with that, I'm gonna go to check the participants, see if anyone has their hand raised. I see none. On the list of attendees, we still have no call-in participants, so anyone who's on the attendee list should be able to raise their hand, and no one's hands are raised. So with that, I'm going to close the discussion at this point and conclude this hearing on these bills and charter amendments. And thank you all very much for your time and attention, and enjoy the remainder of your day.